Okay, so, we're going to move right into the meeting and we're going to start with the capable superintendent discipline. So, I'm going to start out by saying that we're all here tonight because we know that we have a meeting and that we are going to discuss it tonight and we are going to try to put it to rest tonight. Again, any questions and anybody would like to make during your discussion portion of the meeting, again, I ask you to come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name. We will then have our, well, the motion before there's any discussion and then we will follow the discussion and then we'll go from there. Again, I need people to be civil and respectful and we really need to stay on topic and not try to turn on the kitchen fan. So, alright. So, I guess we're going to start by talking about the reason we're here is the plagiarism in items in the Florence newspaper. You can't hear me?
No.
No?
Yes.
Gary? Can we clear it up a little bit? Thank you. Is that better? Yeah. Okay. I'll try to hold it back for the last two minutes too bad. Items of plagiarism in the Florence newspaper. We know that this has occurred, we know that there's more than one incident, so we are not going to miss it through every article that everybody may have found in the, on the internet. We are going to concede the point that it happened and it's there. So, with that said, we are going to start with a motion from Mr. Finley, I believe.
Okay. I got it. Alright, I want to make a motion to initiate a termination hearing in regards to superintendent John McGee.
I'll second.
Alright. So. Now we're at the discussion and did everybody hear the motion?
No.
Okay, the motion is to initiate a termination hearing for Mr. McGee. And Mr. Finley committed that motion and Mr. Gregor has seconded the motion. So now we're at discussion. So, I'm going to start with both of us here at the table and then we will have it open for other folks. So, this is Corin, how about you start it?
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? In consideration of how our meeting was tonight, I of course was disappointed with what has happened with Mr. McGee, but in the seven and a half years that I've worked with Mr. McGee, I have felt nothing but admiration for his ability as a superintendent. I have five of my own children and one of the things that's a rule in our house is that we talk about having a savings account when we deal with one another. And I always tell my kids that you better make sure there's enough money, you've got enough good things in your savings account, that's when you have to make a withdrawal from there that's not going to bankrupt you. Well, hopefully you understand my point, but my point is that in the seven and a half years that I've worked with Mr. McGee, he has more than filled the savings account for me. And as I was thinking about some of the things that he has accomplished for us, initiated for us as a board to be a better board, I wrote some of these things down and I hope that you will bear with me because it's a fairly long list of things that he has accomplished or helped us accomplish while he is in the superintendent here at Florence. I'm a school finance. When he came on reserve, and for those of you that don't know that might not be aware of this, the state would like for every public school to have ten percent of its general fund in reserve so that if something happens somewhere along the line, you have a savings account basically to cover that. And when Mr. McGee came, we had about five, about five percent of our general budget was in reserve. And that has been raised to about almost nine percent now in the last seven and a half years that he's been here. When he came, our accounting software that we had was fairly old and outdated and he initiated a new software program for us to take over. He's also done that with the accounting system for our student activities. He's, he has initiated and worked in conjunction with a number of grants that have brought more than, well, I wouldn't say more than, almost a million dollars into our school district. He's worked with the Dorito on Safe Route for school grants and that's what you see that's been responsible for the sidewalks and, you know, to the parks, the safety of our students. And that grant has over $200,000 involved. There's the Valentine Grant and that's a grant to stop the pollution in the valley and that's about $25,000, $25,000 yearly that's coming to our school district. We have a quality school grant, I'm not sure of the money on that, I couldn't remember what that was. Then we have a Quick Start Energy Project grant, this was several years ago and Florence obtained one of the highest P Ls in that grant. We received $430,000 to update the infrastructure of our energy within our school. He is also, you know, in many schools they have to hire a negotiator when it comes time to deal with certified and classified staff and he, because of his experience and expertise, has been able to negotiate with two members from the board, with our staff, saving us thousands of dollars because when you have to hire an independent negotiator to come in, they're looking at probably a minimum of $5,000. I'm in a homeschool program. He has been very involved in updating and keeping our curriculum in shape with other schools and with the nation, with the nation. We've added A P classes, he's been supporting as small a class as we can have in our middle schools, specialty classes in the elementary. He's just implemented the Alex program for now and there's been quite a bit of discussion about that at recent meetings. He's also implemented a faculty program for reading. He continues to support improvement on all three human levels and he was very involved in finding money to upgrade the books in our library. School maintenance. He, several years ago, we changed our custodial program. We had privately contracted this memory agency and they, when they came back with their, contract to us, they had raised that considerably. So, Mr. McGee suggested that we go back to hiring our own private custodial staff and has been involved in doing that and keeping on top of that. We have new lockers, we have new bleachers here in the old gym. We installed a brand new A D compliant grant for any special needs that's in the back of our building and if you have not seen that and you need to, we should have had a before and after picture because it's just really incredible. That also took a grant also and that was over $200,000. We've replaced the football scoreboard, new lights installed in the gym, new sound system in the gym. It's a continual upgrade of our sewer system, I'm sure you're all aware of pretty much that that's a continual upgrade. And then we have, and then we had an upgrade of our drinking, of our drinking wash system that was implemented a couple of years ago, I think. Facility improvement. And these are things I think that when somebody drives by the school, they're not going to see or appreciate unless you have somebody to tell you. I mean, every year, because of its budgeting ability, we are able to put in some rooms, carpet, paint, we've remodeled the elementary bathrooms, there's a new table from the pavilion, we've had to replace the hot water heater in the kitchen in our locker room, we've got a new roof on our building, we've had a, we have a new storage of chef or equipment, we've got sprinkling system, new lunch tables, we have, we have to install a new fire alarm system, that was several years ago, that was one of the first things that he was, that he had to initiate. New sidewalks and then we've got skate park and lot that we've never had before. Our staff concerns, I mean, he has tried to work very hard in our budget to keep, to keep the teachers that we have here. He's replaced, he's helped us replace the valance cameras, implemented the ability to, when you're calling every morning for substitutes, we have a new program that is an automatic calling system. He's done the same thing with the school reach notification program which his parents have very much appreciated. We have phones installed in the gym now for safety reasons. We have white cards, white card systems for staff. He's helped us replace outdated equipment. We have new fencing around the school that was a safety issue and our softball field. Technology improvements, almost every teacher in our system has a police in board, so those of you that might not understand what that is, it's a great big iPad is really what it is. I guess that's the best way for somebody who's not very technical to explain that, which has been a great, a great thing for our teachers. He's initiated by new computers every three years. He has totally upgraded our computer system, our network, our wireless network, installed fiber office and installed a V D R system into our new gym. Those are just some of the things I think that people might not be aware of that have happened within our school district in the last seven and a half years. I've lived in this school district for 40 years and I can tell you, we've had more upgrades on our old building in the last seven and a half years than we have had previously in the last 20. We essentially actually remodeled, which was 20 years ago because we just paid off our , our, the bond on the net. The other thing I'm really proud of that I think comes, you know, comes from good leadership in our, in our district is that last year we found out that we have the highest extracurricular GPA of all classroom schools. We have the lowest drop out rate for all schools in the valley county. The technology has improved so much that we're one of the schools that people look to for our network. We've made such improvements in student safety with the sidewalks and parking lots and in the last three years, we've been able to pass three general elections, general fund elections, a levy, non-election, general fund levy that has helped finance our district. Because of those things, I, I am supportive of Mr. McGee and I know that he has, as we all have, looked at a mistake that was made and are going to make corrections for that and there will be some discipline that's going to fall tomorrow, but I am still supporting Mr. McGee, so I see him today.
I'm supportive of Mr. McGee.
I don't have a superior statement, but I do want you to know that I believe John is a very charitable man and a, and a moral and I believe there's a lot of judgment or discipline if you want to call that, but I work with the district for 25 years and my job is to lose the order. And the loser, when I had to share that, it all had to be approved by the superintendents. Everything was written, locked, and before printed and sent out. And I signed it by, and I gave him correspondence to the superintendent, it got to a point that he didn't see it until it was back from the printer. So, I knew about the copyright stuff, I watched it, I hope I never made a single copy of it while. In this case, because of my experience working here, I would say a lot, but it's a clarifier error. But it's John's mistake to use error ultimately because he should have caught Eric's death. So, it passed the double on the day, it was, I think, in the news letter that was put together, the stuff that's put in it, it was ready to go. And we trust that it was all right. So usually that's the propensity that comes back. They trust that their shot could have been right. And errors do happen, but I stand behind John because I know him well, I believe that he's awesome and everything from a family, an awesome family as I know him, he's, he's a member of our community, he wants to live here to be a part of it and I agree that he has to be disciplined. But I think with what we're talking here, two here tonight and what he's already gone through, I think that he's paid the price for us. And I think we have to understand that everybody does make mistakes. It's just a lot of us, when we make a mistake, it's not out in front of the public. And we've all done dumb things, but we just don't get caught. And a lot of that is, it's not the people that are doing it, it's just the ones that get caught once a year. And when you're a public figure, when you're superintendent of education, you're in Florence, then you, you are of a higher standard. And so if you make a mistake, it's a lot more serious. But I, I do support John. I'm not going through this as my, I should, I knew the air and I still support John. I think with the discipline that we put on this meeting tonight, I think he's paid enough.
Sorry, thank you, Mrs. McGee. Mr. Finley, would you like to go next?
Sure.
Well, I'm sorry to anybody that doesn't have a job. It's an absolutely terrible thing, it's very easy to avoid. And it does what it does, unless we all, all encounter, it will lower our standards, I think. It should be, we need to maintain our standards, it should be, should be consequences, pretty serious consequences. It might be a little, little hard on him, but that's just the way I'm, you know, at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, and Mr. Gregor?
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm talking to the board and the audience here and I do not support termination and here's my reasons why. I'm glad we had that long list because that means I don't have to speak in long, but the one thing I'd like the board to consider is, we've done evaluations, annual evaluations and we look at what I consider to be the essential function for the job of the superintendent and on most of the evaluation categories, Mr. McGee has rated it as being fairly high. I'm probably one of the hardest on those evaluations. I think the score that I get may be lower than what the average usually is, I probably drag the average down because I am fairly critical, but that being said, the, the ratings have been high and they're high because of reasons that Betsy Andorphy has talked about, you know, the school funding, the improvements. Each, each year the school continues to get, the structure of the facility gets better, the, you know, you can see it in the parking lot, you can see it in the ramp. That doesn't happen by accident, that's, that's from good management of our, of our general fund. Also, we've had financial audits that have, have been very good. There's been minor issues with those audits and we can take care of fairly quickly. And so that's something else I appreciate. I feel like, well, another thing too is that I want to mention is, you know, there's future improvements. There's, we've had academic improvements throughout the years as well since, especially if, you know, I pay attention out of where I'm at, I've got a kid at school. As well as I do know of future improvements that are currently being worked on, I think are very important to keep going. Now, I think plagiarism, this plagiarism, the incidents has definitely overshadowed the excellent results. It does definitely deserve dissonance, but I don't believe it deserves termination. I don't think plagiarism like this falls in the same category as a termination category. And when I'm, when I'm thinking of termination, I'm thinking of more serious offenses like breaking the law, you know, having DUIs, fraud, stealing, you know, inappropriate relations. We see that all the time around the country and a lot of times that, that ends up being cast over. I think this has taken much more seriousness than, than those things, although I think those are termination categories. So, and the other thing that's coming out of this, I know it's extremely hard for John, it's extremely hard for, I think, the whole district, but I believe the students are also seeing firsthand the consequences of one's actions. I guarantee, you know, before this whole thing, and I'm, I'm not making this an excuse for doing it, it's not even the reason why, but students are seeing the consequences that John has had to go through and his family. And so I think there is, there is an unexpected positive that comes out of us and I don't believe, you know, with discipline, I don't believe termination is necessary and that's why I'm trying to convince the board. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go left, so we'll start with audience members who might want to come to the podium and identify themselves and speak.
Hi, my name is Bleena Nichols and I've been in this, in the district this time for 12 years. And I agree all the things that he's done, but I also agree, he's getting paid to do this. If he didn't get a paycheck, this all this stuff wouldn't have been done for our citizens here. Didn't vote for the tax 11, wouldn't have a lot of the money that's there. Termination, yes, a hard thing to do, but I really believe the outcome for termination is going to be for the best.
I guess I'm from the old school.
Oh, correct. Please state your name again.
I'm Stacy McCracken, I've lived in the Florence area for about 35 years. I've had six grandchildren graduate from school with good education.
Can you speak a little closer to my seat?
I have six grandchildren, have six of my grandchildren have gone through the school and they've all received good education. They've all gone out to college and now pursuing their careers whatever, whatever they chose to do. You know, I, I don't really get involved with school politics. I'm one of the silent, silent majority that sort of sits back and thinks that's the people that we owe, yeah, to do that. I recently have, I experienced a return from the state back of Los Angeles in Houston. The first thing I noticed was that I told one of the only two that had both her own name and loyalty to this faulty state. Both of them read the business very well. Our band and grownups were excellent and learned cheer. And I realized that that changed from training, good training and coaching in the school. I was really proud that I could say I was in Florence. I also know that our children were very creative, considered others, and were excellent, you know, that they really had this fortune shared. When I give out to younger, especially teenagers who act this way, I think it's really a job to set leadership. That leadership comes from the teachers, the educators, the coaches, and they demonstrate their power at the top. And I can say that you shouldn't be proud of these young people who are truly out of this school, they are fine young people. You know, even if that's a case you make a mistake, I'll say that I've never made one, but that's not true. If there's anyone here who has, if I have maybe you did and everything, it was rather than anything else. If there's anyone in this room who has never made a mistake, I really advise you, it has to be very difficult to be perfect. With occasions like this happens, I often think of her to the Bible. There seems that there was a very fancy person that had a name that they were trying to stole from that one to die because of the safety of me. That is what Jesus said to us and said, let's get this here. Let's keep moving without sin, cast on the first stone. Obviously, no, the death side of God is proud of the choice of the other, continue to move forward to admit with their different mistakes. The cross is a pattern, not a stone and stone, nor ever so that I have a sainted version of the Bible, John, chapter eight, verse seven. There are certainly problems in the world of behavior, seems to be we can better reflect our energies for sure, for things that really are affecting us, really need to be taken care of. Let's not be an awful fool. If we set ourselves up to judge on that, then we should first know all the good that he has done for the school and for the community. And definitely should, on every side, on all of the places he has, that he has been in the cross for. All I have to say is if you get to know him, don't fight against him.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
My name is David Buchanan, I live up on Cooney Ridge in Florence. I have four children, two are going to school, previously D E C A and I've got one student. My two sons are now, I'm at the University of Montana, they're biologists, they're doing well, thankful to God for that. And I have two additional students here at the school. I have a middle schooler and I have a high school. And I'm also thankful that they are doing extremely well at Florence. The reason we came to Florence originally many years ago was because of the reputation of the school and we believe that will continue under the current superintendent's tenure here. I guess, I have a couple of questions that I want to ask the board. First of all, has, has Mr. McGee apologized and taken responsibility for his discrepancies? And the board has disciplined him in the past for those discrepancies, is that not true? They have discipline, they have letting out some disciplines for Mr. McGee to accomplish. Has Mr. McGee accomplished those disciplines? Has he not spoken to two hundred and fifty high school students in English classes, sixty-four, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, and told them what he did and why it was wrong? Has he not done that? I understand, my understanding is he has, my daughters were part of it. Has Mr. McGee written a letter to the person that he took the article from that was in the most recent, telling him of his discretion and asking his forgiveness for that discretion? Seems to me when you look at the actions of the board as it relates to Mr. McGee and his leadership, that John McGee has attempted to do all of the acts of him in his discretion. I don't know that there's any more that you can ask of a man, except that he be submitted to the authority that God and our country has put before him. We are all called to submit to authority, there's always somebody higher. And it seems to me, in my looking and examining this case, that Mr. McGee has attempted to right the wrong that he did. Doesn't make the wrong right, but he's attempted to make it right. And so, when we sit around our table, our dinner table, and I, the two boys, and they're at home. They know I'm home, it's terrible, twenty minutes away. But when the girls are home, and we talk, and we talk, they don't, they don't come forward and question what they're going to do in the future as it relates to this. Is what comes out of our, up at our table is that there was a man who made an egregious error, a mistake, but was managed to stand up and bear up under him. And for them, that sets an example for them, an example that I want them to exude in their life, which is one of taking responsibility for your actions, but then going forward to make them right and to make sure you don't fall into that same error again. I am, while I'm, I feel terribly for what John has gone through, he brought it on himself. We all know that he brought it on himself, I just don't think he was thinking. When I did some research on web plagiarism just the other night, one of the things that I found was that there is an understanding, an incorrect understanding in our communities that to take and borrow things from the internet is okay, that that's something that's somewhat acceptable. In reality, when we look at Kate Turabian's book on how to write research and thesis and dissertations, one of the things you find is that it's not acceptable, and that we must give credit for everything. But there is this pervasive understanding that you can do this, and it's wrong. And I think we found out here that it is wrong, and the example has been set for our children, for the future, that that is wrong, and that they can't do that. And so, I would close with this. I would encourage the board to encourage Mr. McGee, if he survives this, and I hope he does, to continue to write to the top of you. Mr. McGee is not a great writer. I don't think we hired him for his writing ability. I think we hired him and he has proven out his administrative and his management ability, his operations, leadership, and how he's led the school. And it is for those reasons that I think he needs to be maintained in this position, because I am concerned with who's gonna come and replace Mr. McGee. I mean, let's be real, we're Florence. And we don't have the ability to draw some of the big names like Mizzoua. Whether we even want those names here, I don't know. One of the great things about John McGee is he lives in the community, he's part of it. And I don't think we do this to people who are part of our community. I think we expect good from them, but when they fail and they're willing to take responsibility, we gather around them and we support them and encourage them. And so, I close with that and just to say that, lest him, who was out, was without sin, cast the first stone, we are all men and women who falter, fail, and we will continue. And I hope that grace will be given to me when I fail, the same amount of grace will be given to Mr. McGee. Grace, unmerited favor, what he don't deserve, but should get out of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
My name is Jim McRee, vice president of the board, from two thousand seven, two thousand ten. Some of the problems that we were playing forward, vice president of the board, a few other members, still continue for here, haven't been taken care of. And I respect his position, I do, it's a very hard position, nobody agrees with me all the time, but you have to make the right decisions as a board member. I have a lot of respect for Mel Finley, he's come up forward, he's the oldest person responsible, I feel, for what he committed. It shouldn't be, it's not, look it up in the dictionary, it's theft, people, it's theft, okay? Our superintendent committed theft, okay, look it up in the dictionary. What are we gonna do to a student at our school where we got to steal money in the locker room and he says, "I'm sorry." We just have to slap the hand and say, "Well, all of that we took, what else?" "Let's continue?" It's all right.
Excuse me, he needs to speak out, he needs to speak out.
Okay, one thing to everybody now, okay? And also, I'd like to address Vicki's comments, of all the things that have been done, the people that deserves a credit for what she brought up, more than anybody, were the community members, the people who made it after this community. This is the business that's running for us, the school, it's not a good place to go. I'll tell you, if I had a employee, I own a local business that sold from me, there wouldn't be two seconds before he'd be fired. So I want the board to think about that, what actually happened. And we deserve better respect than ever, the money that we're giving to the school and all the will of his confidence, he's been here for seven years. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
My name is Derek Earl, children, wife and I moved here in nineteen eighty-eight, and this will be our sixteenth year having kids go through this school. And so, thank God we're gonna be empty next year, we're looking forward to that. I first met John, we were doing Cub Scouts together, letting down a cheap-looking glass sandbrush. And I was kind of the chair of the Cub Scouts at the time, and we were having issues with the gym, gym time, because there's so many activities going on here. Within the week, he had our issues solved, and I thought, boy, this guy is a different kind of guy. He's actually getting something done. When you have guys that can do that for you, when you have doers that accomplish tasks and build the kind of building, build the kind of futures for these kids that we need, those are the kind of people you'll hang on to. So really, I want to just, you know, tell you that Vicki Bliss was tremendous. We've all, I've been here for sixteen years, I've seen the improvements, I've seen the score, I've seen the technology, it's real. And it's been fantastic. My daughter graduated from here as a senior three and a half years ago. She took so many AP classes, she graduated from Leadership Montana in three and a half years. So, somewhere or somehow, that's a bit of leadership, to get those extra AP classes in. And so, I guess I don't come before me very often, but, you know, I really would like the board to get back to focusing on academics instead of politics. We just had a beautiful prom last week, the basketball teams played very well. Where is the positives in the topic? I'd like to see that instead of some of the negatives in the paper. This school has a lot to offer, and you take a look at the body of leadership of John McGee, it's ninety-nine and ten. And so if you're gonna sit back and judge somebody, you better take a look at all the good things he's done, as well as maybe the errors. And so, everyone makes errors. And so, look in your own eyes before you take up that judgment. Again, thank you, John, for all you've done, and Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, baseball, softball, all the things we've done together over the years, it's been fantastic, so, thank you.
My name is Devin O'Brien, I'm a staff trustee from two thousand six, two thousand nine. And I can't say that there was a lot of positives that went on in that time, with me as a trustee or with the business of the district. And tonight I'd like to talk about the business of the district. Sheriff person Appleby, was there a meeting on January twenty-third where the board addressed an act of plagiarism by the superintendent?
Uh, we're gonna do a question later, just to hear.
Well, we're talking about actions, there was already something went on in the closed session.
On the twenty-third, we had Mr. McGee's personnel review.
Okay.
And we are not gonna discuss back and forth what happened.
Okay, statements in that, statements that came out of that meeting, in the rally conference stated that the board didn't require Mr. McGee to amend the policy for Mr. Robert Bosa, also that the board wanted Mr. McGee to talk to the students to apologize for the actions. Policy number fourteen hundred in your school's policy manual. Very last sentence, policy fourteen hundred. No formal action shall take place during executive session. The board wrote that policy, also a policy fourteen hundred. This meeting was asked for over a month ago. In policy fourteen hundred, the chair has the right of individual to call a special meeting without me being held. Chair has the right to ask for that. Also, two other board members also have the right to ask for that. It doesn't take a board meeting to call a special meeting. There's a list of twelve policies that were broken with the act of plagiarism and the actions followed by the board. I'm only gonna read one. Policy six-one-one-zero. Policy six-one-one-zero is superintendent's qualifications. And I'm just gonna read one line in that. Sorry about the delay, folks. Qualifications and appointment for superintendent. Superintendent must be a mature and enforceable officer and a capable. He has failed that in your policy manual. And if you're not gonna follow the policy manual, please don't expect a children's call. Thank you.
My name is Zilla, let's just. Can anybody down here hear what I'm saying? Because I had a terrible time trying to understand what people were saying, and whose microphone is facing here. This is a school board that has a tremendous responsibility. A school board that has a tremendous responsibility. Unpleasant. You've worked with John McGee for years, you obviously respect him. Unfortunately, by an accident, some students got a hold of a computer program and identified some of the content of an article that you wrote, John. And they identified as having been written by somebody else. When I first heard that, I accepted your explanation that it was an accident, that you were pressed for time, that you saw your name on that article, that there wasn't time to change it. And I believe that explanation. It seemed like it was insane that anybody could make, and certainly I need my share. But then, what happened was, much to your surprise, I'm sure, and much to my surprise, several more articles were identified. And that same pattern was established, you were taking other people's work and passing it off as your own. The word is plagiarism, and you know, and I know, that in academic circles, that is one of the cardinal sins. When that additional plagiarism was identified, what it did was it made that first explanation of yours, in my opinion, an absolute lie. You used that explanation to be so plausible, but on reflection, it was not true. You have been, over a long period of time, I would imagine, doing this and getting by with it. You did not recognize that somebody, some small student in a laboratory, got a hold of a computer program and uncovered the serial plagiarism that you have been responsible for. Now, I feel that listening to the board, that it's gonna be a four-to-one vote to retain you. I think that's a reflection on the thinking of these board members. And I think it's a terrible mistake. I think that you know, and I know, that what you have done is not only wrong, but it would be cause for dismissal, dismissal in virtually every university that I'm aware of. Certainly at Annapolis and at West Point, you would be gone. I'm sorry, the board has made the decision it has. It's nothing personal, you made a mistake and you should be dismissed. And Mel Finley, I know he likes you, he respects you, but he's made that same judgment, that you should be dismissed. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm gonna ask everyone who continues to speak, to please speak directly to the board, not to the audience, not directly to Mr. McGee, he remarks to us as the board. And I ask the audience to be more respectful, and if you can't be more respectful, then I ask you to leave. Okay, no applause, no cheering, no disrespect. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
My name is... My name is Stephen Danron, I got a letter from my son.
Can't hear you.
I can hear better.
Keep them, up there.
My name is Stephen Danron, I got a letter from my son, who is in Pine Hills right now. And he has heard about this, and he asked me to address his letter, and I'd like to read it to you. It says, "On the matter of superintendent Mr. McGee, I'd like to point out a few things that might aid you in your passing of any sort of judgment. Number one, as committee, you denied me a right to public education, regardless of my educational future. You thought of only yourselves. Number two, given this speech, you justified your decisions based on wanting to face the consequences of my actions. Now I'm in Pine Hills and there was just that. Three, it has come to my attention that Mr. McGee has been caught for plagiarism, the act of stealing, whether it be cigarettes or words of another, is simply wrong. You've shown me as a fifteen-year-old that you couldn't forgive a kid for his actions. So how could you forgive an adult? I have learned that just because a person is in a position of power, does not mean he or she is correct in their ways. It also does not mean that he or she should be treated in any degree that you are. No matter what the crime is, it is still wrong, and you should, it should not go unpunished. If an apology from someone who did something that wasn't at the school or didn't affect us, anyone at the school, isn't enough, is it logical to accept an apology from somebody who knew full well the danger and the people he was representing? Now I'd like to read what I have. Now, I'd like to read what I have. Uh, Mr. McGee, you told my son that he must accept responsibility for his actions, and he did just that. My son apologized, he went to court, and he was sentenced. My son asked to come back to school, was not allowed to go to school. Okay? Uh, they put him into digital camp. When his grades went to drop, he asked for help as a family. We weren't giving him help. We were told by Mr. McGee, "When my son is trouble understanding his work, I make him sit there until he gets it," which is fine. Where was that nobility when you were copying the other's work, claiming it to be your own? When my son came to the school board, and we asked the school board for the same meeting, sorry about that, mally, you told my son that there was a student in the school with sensibility. You said that you would be remiss in your duties if you didn't protect that sensibility. Where's those values protecting those sensibilities for that student now? Vicki, even though my son was sentenced by court, you told my family that the community had a right to punish him first time. Where's that right for the community now? Pat, you said in a Zoolian article that we need to forgive. Where's that forgiveness when we ask for it? You expect mercy and forgiveness when it's you and your friends are caught in something wrong, but not for others. I sat here and listened, and as Vicki and Dorothy stated, that an honest mistake is an honest mistake. While other people make mistakes, you don't seem to have the same judgment for them as you do for John. And I would like to read a few words that I wrote down here in conclusion. It says, "Watch your thoughts, because for the words, watch your words, they become actions. Watch your actions, they become habits. Watch your habits, they become character. And watch your character, it becomes your destiny." Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Mark Gilligan. I've been here about a million, about fifty years. Had all these four to two schools, we have reached each place. But first of all, knowing the circumstances, our school's business, when we tie a eighteen, eight-point-five to ninety-nine budget, our payroll is probably eighty-five to ninety percent of that, which is half their money. And they do this in special. And anyone, and they do this in the past, individually. If this happens, and we own this, we're not the principal. This is business. It's reasonable. And the Board needs to hold their integrity of credibility. And our school has a presence that doesn't help in taking the leader of our school to have the status and sacred, which is, in my opinion, all of it, my opinion. I tell everybody. And, uh, and what really surprised me, and I don't owe any teachers' union members a favor, but I was surprised the teachers' unions didn't come out with, uh, no votes, no confidence for our superintendent. And then I stopped thinking of top three of all that's talking about the good old boys probably in our school. And I'm sure probably seven, five, seven teachers would like to do that. But the good old boys probably probably tell us, "Don't do that." And I would love to talk to the teachers' unions, because I would accuse them of it. Because the good old boys- And I had to talk to John McGee once after he became superintendent. And I told John to do a vote, because they're trying to run the school something. And I think they've accomplished that. I do, because there hasn't been any other, and they're all like John, you know, because everything is all important to them. But just remember, you gotta look at yourself in the near tomorrow. And you gotta, you gotta vote this course, and take it. And take it, and only teach yourself, first of all. And remember, this is business, not a project for us. Thank you.
Need one of those.
Madam Chair and Members of the committee, for the record, my name is Kristen Page-Nye. And I have two students here in the Florence School District. And I live on Broadway Drive. Uh, I wanna start off by saying, I used to be a John McGee here. I really did. Uh, I think here eight years, so I think I'm talking to the committee. Been told that many a time. Uh, and I dated Mr. McGee since I was very little, with his wife and mom, something in our, in our neighborhood. And, uh, he had a nurse. And over time, I have actually learned to appreciate Mr. McGee's ability to be different with people. And he's able to deal with hotbeds like I am. Because I know I am. I've been hurt for years, but I'm still a little bit of a hotbed. Uh, but he, he gave my trust over time because, man, that's a difference. And it wasn't that he was just trying to tap me off and agree that it was better. He, he was a leader and could appoint life distance to raise this and life order around the way it sits. And that's leadership. Sure, it absolutely takes community to help us with stuff. But it takes a leader to make sure that those things happen. I guarantee, if you did not have the leadership in that office and the team that works the way the principals and the other staff, that, that list would not happen. The other, through, through, like, the past eight years that I've seen too, was I started to really look at who I was joining with the John McGee teams. I looked at who was actually doing things at the school. Who was getting the job done? It was also leaders, citizens. What they were part of the community, and I want you all as subsidies to really think about this when you make this very hard decision on somebody's life, somebody's career. The lead on business, yes. He absolutely has made terrible mistakes here. And I did consider it serious, but like, you know. Absolutely. But I don't see the humility of the freedom. Can you imagine going into that college of students and explaining, not only that he screwed up multiple times, but what it does to your kid? The kid that is school-bought these kids? What it does to your family? That's leadership. And if you plagiarize for again, absolutely, the right to be on the law, and I think John McGee. But this is his opportunity for us to show when we do make mistakes and break mistakes of that, that we give second chances. And look at the leaders. Look at the ones who are in our community. The final one who's trying left in the block away from his kids home. Look. I mean, when I first got a full-on, I get held captive. I'm actually afraid to say that, because I might get my title slapped. There are people who would not help out because they were afraid of the leaders. My friends on the board and behind me, we have more of a problem with Mr. McGee. We have a problem that adult bullying is acceptable, except within this community. And until we deal with that, we are not gonna, we are not gonna recruit any, any replacement for grandparents that's gonna be worthwhile. We're not gonna be able to sell the houses that are for sale and build good town businesses. This is not about Mr. McGee right now. He needs to deal with his consequences. But what you're hearing is, is from the leaders. And, um, there are people who have legitimate concerns, as I do. But think about who is leading the charge on this. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Melissa Mitchell. I'm a student at our school. And personally, I'm carrying the whole meeting thing over and over and over again. And I know if I say it right, I get an automatic up. It's not a stop sign. It's not, it's okay, just don't do it again. It's next. And if I do it multiple times, I can be kicked out of school. And we're the students, and we're at the bottom of the pile, and he's our leader. And I cannot be against Mr. McGee. But as a leader, you're supposed to set the example. And he's leading an entire community in a school. And he's setting the example for all of the board members, all the principals, the teachers, and the students. And it just doesn't make sense that if I can't plagiarize, I can do it multiple times. I don't really have anything else to say.
My name's Mark Johnson. Uh, I've had three kids go to school here. One's graduated, and one's gonna be graduating this year. And I agree with what the young lady just said here. I don't know John McGee all that well personally. And it's not about, um, my personal feelings towards John McGee. It's about the principal involved. Plagiarism, plagiarism. Let's see. Uh, it's just very, the young lady's very, what do we teach our kids if we're gonna allow this to happen in our school? Uh, if we allow this to happen, I say shame on board for letting this go on. Uh, I just do not have my kids go to school here with this kind of thing going on. I end up letting my own kids come home and questioning what's the definition and what is all these plagiarism? Uh, you know, it's just wrong. He is the leader of our school, and he doesn't ever stop on that. I'm just making a short statement.
Sir, what was your last name?
Johnson.
Um, my name is Christina Graff. If you can talk, pick the microphone up and talk right into it.
Um, my name is Christina Graff. And, um, we have been a member of the Fox community since two thousand nine. We originally came here from Washington. And, um, I did a lot of research on school. I did a lot of research on school before I moved here. I chose the school to the Office of Public Instruction. I checked out our school board preparation rates. I checked out, um, student teacher ratios. Um, I really did my homework. And when we first went to the school, I have to say, I was far wrong with my guess. Um, I know it's a smaller town, there's not as many tax dollars and whatnot to support, you know, more teachers and different classrooms and whatnot that are available for our students. Um, but what I didn't expect was to be walking down halls and hearing this and that in front of teachers and whatnot, and everybody needed to learn this to it. Our students from kindergarten to kindergarten all rallied me up. Our children, the elementary students should be helped by our teachers because they're role models for a number of students that are up to some of the students. That type of program starts from zero to five from kindergarten up. And that's how we teach our kids. And you don't see any of those from anything like that for about six years. Because it takes time for the young kids that learn that program to start role modeling for their younger ones. And that's what we've always taught our kids, that myself and my husband, we are our role models, our children. So if we do something, how are we to tell our children that they are not allowed to do it? Um, the first board meeting, I was too, I won't name the staff member, but I was told that it was because of outsiders like me why we have a problem here for. That was in May two thousand nine, and it was over the poor and hungry bear situation. And I started to talk to some other parents, and at the time, I was told, "Don't even bother with them involved because this will be targeted, and they will be ostracized, and they will pay the price for it." And you know what? After talking to lots of parents, I believe them. So I stepped out and figured, you know what? I think the great kids, they don't have the problem. But their problem is that they are put up with the other kids. It's impossible. Um, the reason why I'm going through all this analogy is, is that as administrators and parents, we are role models for our children, um, what is acceptable and what is not. And when we do make a mistake, what the consequences are. Um, two things. Our children have seen Mr. McGee come into the classroom and cry in front of them, and which originally, um, our friend was in the spot thinking he was gonna ask, you know, questions for me being an officer, you know, how it happened, what, you know, how did this situation occur, to somehow try to, you know, find out how the mistake occurred. And as soon as he, you know, saw his teaching Mr. McGee and started crying, he felt guilty. And my children have to feel guilty for wanting to ask questions in regards to accountability. And when it comes down to accountability, one article is one thing. But the first article that came out, that was supposed to make us, as a community, feel more secure and feel safer after the shootings in Connecticut. That was the first article that was found, and it was, it was plagiarized for being a word for work. And you have students up here at this school. And you didn't find heartfelt words that would tell us as a community that, you know, we're looking into this, or we're doing that to make us feel better. That's what, that's what hurt me. Plagiarism is how that was bad, but it was the article that was bad, you know? That that particular article was not heartfelt and didn't come from you being a parent to a student's parent for. So, I mean, that really, I mean, it's probably killing the gut, I have to tell you. And that also bothered the kids, because our kids, the last two days before Christmas break, didn't want to go to school, because they didn't feel safe. I mean, we here in a smaller town, we do not even have our own SWAT team. If something occurred at this school, heaven knows how much it takes for somebody to get here. And we usually only have two sheriffs on duty at any given time. So if anything happened at our school, heaven forbid, there would be major consequences. So that was supposed to make us feel safer. But that was the first article, you know? And you knew and were saying about in the thing that you felt like there were people in the community that had an asterisk against you, and, you know, what are the limitations of that? What do you think that they were gonna do? I mean, of course, there may start digging, and seeing if you did it well. I mean, if something's gonna do a lot, I mean, who knows? Maybe they did it twice, two, three times. And that's what's no all that happens. And so the school, we find out, was the first time it was plagiarized, was back in two thousand ten. And that was, the article was published by John McGee. It was taken from Office of Dynamic Administration Administrator's website. So I don't know if you're-
Ms. Graff?
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry. We've already, um, we've already said that we are not gonna discuss every-
Okay.
...argument.
So, well, okay.
So, well, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna concede that there was plagiarism. Um, we're not gonna discuss every item that anybody's found.
Okay, but we did not ever hear none of what articles there were.
I'm sorry, we're still not gonna discuss it.
It's all we can do.
We are, we have-
Okay.
Said that there is plagiarism, we're not gonna discuss-
Well, here's the difference. The difference between plagiarism and copyright infringement is this. Plagiarism is handled by administration at school. Copyright infringement is handled by court. The article that we need, including in the number of 2012, was taken from thishealth.org website. And on their very first screen when you enter it, it says, "Turn this article to me." It goes on to say that in, there are very specific guidelines that you have to follow in order to read their article in print or online. Our faculty includes services to over 2,500 articles. So not only do we have an article that was published, um, by McGee, it was printed out to 2,500 different articles. And it was posted online, which puts those two things right there according to the United States Copyright Amendment Law. Not only puts us in a big financial risk for me too. Um, it's just a four, because that's our new law. And it can go all the way down to the government, the one that handles our economy. Because he's responsible for the folks who think online and that is his crime and he's in the best. And it just can't say he didn't know because it's very, very clear on the website that you can't let, that the fine criteria is for reprinting the article. On what you have to do, you can't edit the article, you can't post the article without hiding it on the website. Um, and you have to tell you all the people that are on it. And not only do you edit the article on the website, but you post it online. And it's a document, which is fixed vehemently that you're not allowed to publicate any of your articles without citing them. And if you only do a partial publication, you have to cite the rest of the articles that you found. And that, you know, aside from everything else, is a big deal. Because that requires the district a financial risk. Not just now, but in the future. Because these people, they may not know now or maybe not. But who's gonna, you know, they may come to me first, but the difference is who touched that article and who included that article in the document you and how it was announced. So that, the 2,500 new letters that went out went out with 3,400 votes in our community. So, you know, aside from these departments and don't get me off the swing. I know you've got a lot of great things for our school. But sometimes, like we tell our kids, you know, you are, sometimes children's states are right on. You know, they're not fixable. Sometimes it's comprehensive, just like if you brought a car, you're going to prison. It's not the same as when you, you know, you don't from local school. There are some things, some actions in life that have our strong sense of it. Unfortunately, would be five years after plagiarism, it's been over and over. It's been between 2010 and 2012. So you didn't come for the first time that plagiarized, they started running like somebody else did. There were many other articles and more, I mean, I just want you to know, I want to know how many different people or websites have their material stolen from. And it's their material. And we take you a lot of money to be able to write your article for profit. We put a profit in this to protect our kids. And to get, for example, the best possible beside the other. And what this is for me was if you're willing to use it, what else can you do? That's what really comes back to my kids. You lose my trust and it's awful. Like you had a server from zero, so now I don't lose anything in there. And that's how we bring our kids. And so I'm not, I don't want to negate anything that you've ever done that's helped our school. I don't want you to think that. But this, these particular issues are, um, the worst. So, um, I thank you for what you've done for our school, but unfortunately, to me, this overrides it. And I, you know, that was really done for me after explaining my kids. Especially the safety article. I mean, that was, wow, above the law, that was, that hurt me and it hurt my kids. So, um, that's all I have to say. And, you know, the National High School Federation, um, one of them, they know one of the people that were plagiarizing them. And we're members of their, their group. The National Federation, the High School Association. And Shane Martin was one of those articles. And so we're members of that group, what am I gonna think about? You know, this is garbage, that's why you're really happy. So, that's, that's it. I guess that's all advice you guys can consider. Thanks for your time.
Um, before you start, I would like to ask how many more people were plagiarizing McGee? Thanks. Alright, thank you. You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to hold that right in your mouth.
I'm not holding it. And I want to thank the board and the administration and the teachers for hanging there and trying to keep this thing running while the outside press. Um, I got an opportunity here, uh, last fall, the work with John, the five weeks I played for supervisor of maintenance. Um, I was impressed with the way the big team operated. Um, I felt the same way. I believe John's done a nice job, so, um, it's a little bit weird. Uh, I saw him here, um, he's on lady day, everything. Um, I, and today, I've seen a lot of agendas up here, different agendas. I'm not so sure that they're all for me. Um, but, uh, I really thought the position was already solved. And now I see that one back here, that, um, I really wish that this community could be pathic and, uh, resolved and let this story do what it's supposed to do. At the end of the day, um, this is about kids and getting them educated. And, um, can they really take on the teacher? Um, I just, I hate to see this pass over again. Uh, I think John did a great job, made some mistakes. But I think it's time for this community to start healing and move forward. Um, and, uh, you know, at the end of the day, um, we just gotta keep it together. That's it.
Hi, I'm Alan Lyles and-
What is happening in my- Right up your mouth, everybody can hear, please, in here.
Sorry. I'm Alan Lyles and, um, I'm here because I feel pretty strongly that this is a matter- I have to figure out something. I feel pretty strongly that I'm, uh, that what we have here is a matter of integrity and honesty. Um, it's, it's, I was, like everyone here, I think, willing to forgive and forget the first occurrence, if that was the matter that came up, whatever we call it. But when all these others did not, that's a real problem. I also have a problem that my kids don't come here to school. I come here to school and pick up kids and do things at school. Um, this, uh, sorry. The superintendent has a different bird. Um, we don't have, I've heard children called copcat keeper. And that they McGee the paper. That was a sad fact. You can say, that's just wrong and it is obvious. And if our kids challenge the integrity of our superintendent, let's chop them. I think the fact that the superintendent didn't tell them fully clearly, disclosed all the problems that occurred, is a problem, is a temporary notice problem. I feel for you guys because you thought this matter was behind you and it extended its contract. And I feel for the board because they, at least what I understand is that you thought this matter was false when this was a school occurrence.
I'm gonna just insert one thing here. Um, anybody who knows how the school runs knows that anyone hired here is hired during the public meetings. And so people, those of you who are following minutes of the meetings in the minute manner that lots of people do, should be able to discern that Mr. McGee has not been offered a contract of any kind at this point. So I'm gonna put this stop to that falsehood that is being perpetuated in the media and in the community that he's been given a contract renewal. That is not the case. So I want that to stop now. Okay?
Any more from the other chair?
I'm sorry, no. Mr. Lyles still has the floor.
Well, ladies, so let me say, it turns out, I deeply apologize. I don't apologize in a close, I guess I should, it was not where I meant it. I wasn't trying to propagate a falsehood or anything else.
You're just giving me a chance to say that what needed to be said.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm a little off track.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. A little nervous here. Uh, but again, it's about honesty. And if that's the case, then great, that's a great opportunity for you to address it. It's a sad fact that, at least, I've given the impression that this was a resolved issue with the one and done type of thing. And it's been brought to the fore. I think it's a sad fact that students are black, still be amongst each other about this. That's a terrible fact. I think it's a sad fact that, we have to be on TV in the TV chair. I think it's a sad fact that other districts are looking at this. It's a terrible thing. And for me, it all comes down to one thing, honesty and disclosure. And I have, like others here, I have a serious lack of distrust when someone is not fully transparent and forthcoming when they've made a mistake. It's like, I got my hands in the picture and I caught one. But I'm not gonna say about all of those things that I've done. I have a problem with that. I hope you do too. Um, because like many others here, I think the superintendent's done a good job. But these don't provide honesty and integrity. And I hope you weigh that in this difficult decision that's before you. And then I hope, whatever you do, they lay out a complete plan of disclosure and, um, transparency to help bring this community together because we are sadly fractured. I don't have an agenda, I'm not part of any agenda. I was afraid to speak because I thought I would be aligned with an agenda. I think there's many people who are like that. And I don't, I don't, I don't want that in our community. This is about kids, this is about kids coming together. And I think you as a board need to help us find that, um, community again. Because I'm proud of the board, I'm proud I had my kids in force. And I wanna continue to be proud. Right now, I'm not so proud with, um, this district. This lack of honor, honesty, integrity really has affected me. Thank you, that's all I can say.
Much easier than others. I've been around here for a while, but there's more than just a few things that have to do with this whole town. And baseball, and schools, and just about everything. And I've seen a lot of people kind of go with the area, I've seen a lot of people kind of go off to work. Just a little time with some of the people on the floor. I don't envy your decision here. But, uh, that's kind of what I'm standing for. I wanna see you make a decision. I watched you cover things up, I've seen you push things aside. I've seen you hold kids' speech at the fire over small fraction. You're real tough, I'm kidding, when it comes down to it. You always have to send a message over to the kids, I watched you, I've heard you say the word. And now I'm hearing you say, did I talk to them because of something for this one adult? I'm like, yes, he's done a fine job, I don't know very well, I've been following the kids and numerous problems. Uh, I'm very surprised by what happened to John and I, Harper, and what we made them. Not very disappointed in what we've done. Uh, I, I think the example that he has set is, I'm proud of, is something that this, this is an event in academic circles that only fits in directly if you're using child. This is a huge thing. The kid that's in college, they're kicked out of the year. And the kid that's in high school, they're kicked out of class, they failed a class. There are consequences, there are, um, you have to be held accountable for what you do in my job. And I don't know why schools are as different as anyone else. When I drop the line, when I do something wrong, and I gotta make money in the state, and everybody just rules and makes a thing. That's not, that's not the fault. The fault is, you know when you drop the line and you've done it numerous times. So if the first time, you probably don't even do that time. You just have to be tough and it, the example that I've written about was for basic. The other guy, Harper, every, I mean, every word was exact. And he put his name on it. And then he blamed it on his secretary. I've heard him blame his secretary for probably five things. That shouldn't have done, didn't get done, and just, it ended up being secretary's fault. I don't believe that anymore. And I haven't met any of the other people because I've been around them a lot and I do. I've been around the board a lot. Uh, I'm not very, I really don't, uh, envy you either. Because if you don't make a right one, you're gonna get blamed. And either way you go, it's gonna be wrong for some of them. But the point I'm trying to make is, if I make a mistake, if I step across a line in my line of work or in any line of work, I know I'm, I know I'm nuts. And I know if a kid had done this and he was standing for you right now, your policies would be the whole speech of the fire. And that's, that's what we do. When the kid does it, you don't even have to be glad. So I think it's time for you to sit down and make a example. I've heard that comment from almost everybody who's, that's it, it's time to make a example. Well, it is time to make a example. It's time for someone to stand up and show some integrity and, um, I'm sorry for what happened and all that shit. Nobody's here like us, nobody wants to be moved back. But it's time for someone who did it. When you make a mistake, you should be held accountable. And the kids came to listen to that and wanted a time to do that, or wanted a time to show that enough. Thank you.
Pat, this is just to address your comment that you made about the rumors about McGee in this contract. I want to let you know that in this, okay, in the, I'm sorry, um, you were, have a chance to come up and speak? Um, right, yes, and so-
We spoke before at 11:00.
No, you do, okay, I know. Well, I want to know that you said that it was a rumor. I called the district on February 8th at 2:42 PM. I was told by Jeanne Morgan. She apologized to me because she did not have McGee's current contract that was voted. And he, his contract was renewed on January 23rd. I'm asking you, how-
Misunderstood question. This was difficult, through that handwriting, the middle, like, fine.
But I had asked, I, you apologized to me, to see me several times, that the board had-
Right. But I had asked, I, you apologized to me, to see me several times, that the board has forwarded. I'm not supposed to sign an affidavit, okay? I have the phone, I have the phone call and everything done. I, I was told that on the twenty-third meeting, that his contract was renewed. Do you apologize? Will you even use the verb is this? Do you apologize for that contract? Even the board hasn't followed it to you?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
How did that happen?
Yeah, okay, okay, all right.
Ms. Morgan gave you incorrect information, okay? She knows now that she gave you incorrect information. So we are gonna, we are not going to continue that the, that the contract has been renewed. It has not been renewed. She gave you incorrect information. We're not completely understanding what your question is. Your question was if that's not.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
And everybody, everybody knows that if you need information from the district office, you need to submit your questions in writing so that everyone can be sure that we understand what your question is and that no one can call up and just blind hide somebody whoever answers the phone. We need to know exactly what your question is. I ask that. We are not going to talk about that. I'm, thank, thank you for letting us know that you were the one who called. Thank you very much.
I didn't have anything to hide, so I didn't, no, that's fine. I have to let somebody know.
That's fine. Uh, and we're not gonna talk about it. Incorrect information that you were given, and we were sorry if that happened.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Michael Drucker. And I don't have a lot to say. I just would like to say that I agree with the end row, that she has been spoke. Um, I'm probably, I think she spoke for a lot of students. I'm very, very open-minded and everything we have to say. Alan Lye, it is about the students. It's about leadership. Um, I'm very disappointed in Mr. McGee. One time, okay? More than one time, not a day. I can tell by this, um, this point, this row, three registered pages, that you've already made a decision. And that's out of me. Um, I've been here for fifty years. My dad graduated from here. He's taken over the school, long time. I'm a fan. Can't tell I'm a fan. I put my car, I'm going to stop, stuff, stuff all over. Um, I believe in this school. I don't believe in this community anymore. I know I'm threatened. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna call for questions on Mr. McGee's motion. And, uh, please, please give your motion once again so everybody can know just again while we're going on.
The motion I made was to initiate a termination of John there in regards to our superintendent's job.
So our motion has been seconded. Uh, we've had a discussion and called some questions. So all in favor of Mel's motion, please begin by the eye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thanks, John.
All right, so.
Yeah, that's the main motion. Uh, we, we developed a letter of reprimand to Mr. McGee, which includes the disciplinary action we've already talked about. In addition. Excuse me, I've, I've got a motion in place, and it's very disturbing that, that people are walking in disrespectful, people are walking out. Uh, including in this letter of reprimand will be a suspension to be further clarified. So that's my motion. Did you get that, Jeanne?
Sorry, did you, did you have to take that again?
The motion is to develop a letter of reprimand to be permanently placed in Mr. McGee's file and includes the already mentioned disciplinary action. In addition, uh, there'll be a suspension to be further determined.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, but you reiterated the convention element of the motion. I just thought.
All right, we, uh, we first of all, I, uh, this is why I'm just seconding the motion. Uh, the motion is to develop a letter of reprimand. And so here's a discussion point. We're gonna talk about what the, um, what the terms of that reprimand are gonna be. So, um, we may have the motion and the second, so we will now proceed to discussion. Um, I'd like to, Mr. Drucker, please start.
Okay, in this letter of reprimand, uh, there'll be, uh, you know, the items that we're going to talk about. But the suspension that I would like the board to, uh, consider is a two weeks or ten working day suspension, um, without pay. Um, and, and we'll, we'll include the exact dates of when the suspension will start and stop. Um, in addition, there'll be a further warning that any, uh, further demonstration of deficient performance in the writing, uh, may result in additional dis, discipline or discharge. Anything else to discuss, Mr. Drucker?
Is there something that you'd like to discuss about that kind of fashion?
No, all right.
Um, hold on a sec. Uh, this is fresh. I think that, um, can you hear?
Too many of it's a true law.
Now, please, um, I think that the two weeks of Mr. McGee's case unpaid is, um, should be the final, um, part of the discipline action for particular, uh, that. I, I like the way that you have, that it was counted down, that it will be, um, in my mind, the count is down. It will be drawn to termination. And I don't suspect that that's not the case, but I'm glad that that's been written. Um, and the date, now, did you have what date you were looking at for that?
May I ask a question about the other case, Julie?
Hold on, hold on, okay. We, we, this is the, 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 okay? Uh, the closing date for the unpaid suspension would be March twenty-fifth, uh, through, uh, April fifth. Are you getting out of here for an unpaid suspension? If this matters, don't get it from a great thing, one who's right for it. That does to the office pool.
Are you, are you fighting a lot of discussions from?
Okay, so, we are, uh, we are in discussion, and, uh, we have to follow the, we have a long discussion. I'm gonna limit it to two minutes.
The only addition that I would make is an attitude to consider. In our opinion, we like to see that when an error is made, that there's, uh, progress, that, uh, there are recommendations to help a person grow in the area that they faltered in. And so I would make a recommendation that instead of, um, Mr. McGee's voluntary inclusion in the Falcon View, that he be required by this board to write every month an article to be published at the Falcon View, and that that article and Mr. McGee's inclusion of that material be reviewed by one of our fine English teachers here at the school. I think it's important, if you're going to discipline, and I agree with the discipline, I, I think a two week suspension without pay is probably a good idea. But I think you need also to add an element that says, this is what we're gonna do to try to help Mr. McGee further. That's what we do to people we care about. The weight of this thing has gotta be huge on Mr. McGee, and it should be. But I think we also need to make, make the next step to help him become a better person, a better administrator, and to move forward in his life as a leader for our school.
All right, thank you for that suggestion. And that's what we're doing right now. We're talking about the, uh, the specifics of the letter that will be drafted, uh, and, uh, signed off by the corporate people, and linked in the CV employment file. So that's what we're talking about, writing off our suggestions for this particular reprimand letter. Uh, can you come back and go and talk to my phone?
So I just have a couple of questions. I, I guess I just have a couple of questions. Um, does the suspension, someone with a suspension record, does that qualify for renewal of contract? Or is that, does that stand in the way for renewal of contract?
It would be something we'd consider. I can't say the sentence goes this long. It would be something we'd consider.
I, I would prefer to, to not let this become a referendum on the board. This issue, I, I think.
You need to hold some mic.
So, sorry. I, I would prefer to not let this action, or inaction, or level of take, um, become a referendum on the board for, um, whitewashing, or what some people would say whitewashing, or endorsing, um, or, um, abstaining, or looking at integrity and honesty issues. I don't know what the right answer is, but it's a fine line. And it would be very easy, one way or another, to become a referendum on the board. And I said, and I really wouldn't want that to happen. So I would just encourage you to look at this way, because I think it's a failure of the highest level. And I'm thinking, how would you continue with such a lack of integrity or honesty in that position? And everything else. I don't know what you'd do with that. But that's, that's my personal opinion, and I bet the opinion of lots of people here as well. Thank you.
My name is B.J. Bannister, and, um, I'm very.
Good search taken.
B.J. Bannister.
Okay, thanks.
I'm very disappointed with what you, your decision was made tonight, because as parents, we have a duty to our kids to raise in our police system and for our citizens. He's a place of leadership, and he does some great things, but he doesn't do those things on the ball. We have some awesome teachers who do those great things. He's just a leader. He's an example for us kids. Now, I have to go home and explain to my kids why a leader can do something like that repeatedly, and it's okay. So when I have to sit there for my kids' homes, and there's consequences, how do we explain that? I went to this school nine years ago because I wanted my kids in a school system that was trustworthy, away from the city, that kind of thing. And I'm just thinking that normally we have this type of example that has diminished. And not when kids go back to school, you don't have a, a standard, I don't believe, because they feel like, oh, I can get my hands up, and I can go do it again. He's repeated this, that, several times. And my question is, after these two weeks, if an old situation comes up that surfaces, is that gonna change the game? Does that mean he's out of it? Or because it was old one, it's okay? Thank you.
Listen, um, the only thing that I recommend with this decision is that, and this has been my criticism of the board, and I've talked to many of you, and talking to all of you now, I think your biggest criticism is that you're not very good communicators. As you can hear, in this information age, we got really many communicators out here. Look at the Falcon Review, look at, you know, all the feet. Uh, when I go through the last person, that there weren't consequences, there weren't consequences that she could agree to, right? But I think it's really important for our community to know about their own consequences to this, and that it's very clear to the community in that it not just be in the newspaper. I think you guys need to really look at how our communication do Mr. McGee as the leader of the school, how he communicates, and not to be as dependent as he are on the Falcon View. I just think that, um, there will be misinformation. You've already heard, people don't agree with what they consider. Non-consequences, right? We're not all that real, but get your information out there so people understand what your decision was. Thank you.
Can I ask a question from up here?
Sure.
Is it gonna be in his file that he stated, is this, after he was found out? Is that gonna be in his file? Not that he came forward, but after he was found out, he did, he did. Is that gonna be in the file?
We, uh, we, we need to discuss, we need to discuss the content of the letter, and the final letter will then become part of the public record. Uh, I can't say at this point, but, uh, however, it's definitely going to be there. Uh, but this is your chance to make suggestions, so.
I think you got a suggestion.
Thank you.
And may I ask one more question?
Sure.
His contract come up for review or to renew?
His contract expired and is in this school here.
Um, yeah, no.
Could we also make a story? If we do, if it can be, we call up Mr. McGee and contract to this pledge of one year this time?
We, um, I'm off. We can certainly, uh, we can certainly consider that as one of the, one of the terms of the reprimand. Uh, we can certainly consider that.
Angie, I'm sorry, Mr. Colas.
I just, Angie, I'm all, um, I've been stuck here all night. I've been at many board meetings, trying. Just taking advantage of what John and I, I don't know like how old friends, but I appreciate the work he's done here. I served on the school board in the nineties. It was a very trying experience. I lasted three years because I, it was hard. And I do feel for what you're going through. And for those of you that have served multiple terms, who goes to you? Because if it's not on the issue, it's something else. And I know you're all community members, and I know what you've all heard, um, because there's a whole evening of someone that's not happy with your decision. And sometimes you're not gonna be happy because they're determined not to be happy. I'm very disappointed in John. I support him. And I'm disappointed now. I didn't have a position to have to stand up and feel a little bit because I, you know, but I am more of a man that, um, can forgive. And I think a big part of that is because when somebody's been grieving, I see China again, the people come, they cherish. They rant, they rave, they give their seal, and. They rap, they rave, they give their seal, and they walk out just as they walked out to me. These kids deserve more, and they should stay here and direct their board meetings and listen. When the principals give their report, the stewardesses give their report, the A.D. gives their report, of all the things that are going on in school that are good. We are not perfect. There is no school that's perfect. When I shared on the board, our stewardesses left, we spent two years searching for a new board that is the first round of candidates or simply unacceptable. I will never forget that experience in my life. I was shocked at two things can apply out of our own. The second year, we can't do it again. And I have felt, I feel like we didn't, at that point, we needed someone so desperately, we just took who we thought was the best, what we had. That said, having lost that experience, I cannot believe, first of all, you only have the full youth, and with what this community has gone through in the last four or five years, and the turmoil and the danger that's behind, tonight people left, I heard them make physical threats. When that person, the people left, there was a gentleman, that made a physical threat against someone else. That offered me penitentiary force, the one that Mr. McGee did. That is fact. And he had it. And I know they're still out there, but I'm sitting there and I'm watching and I'm calling on my nerves. I'm thinking, my God, what is going to happen now? Are we going to have a big fight out in our parking lot? I just, I cannot believe it. We need to be rational. Nobody is saying there's going to be consequences. There's going to be consequences. They might not be your consequences. I'm sure all of this can be a huge consequence, there's no doubt. Termination is a consequence. Lots of times people make decisions they haven't read the paper, administrative meeting. In your mind, you might have felt the A.D. terminated. You might have felt something completely different. But honestly, as a community, we've got all of this together. Such as, this community doesn't bid for nothing else. I'm not going to brag I'm going to be here as far as what, somebody that leads our school and does, I mean, they positive change to this school. So something, I know, the board, I, you're in a tough situation. Thank you.
My name is Johnny Berry. I would like to say thank you to Mel Berry for his character and integrity. I don't think this is what suits in this position. I don't think the rest of the board will treat Mr. McGee as they would suit. It's not fair. Thank you, Mel.
Mr. McGee, does anyone else have anything about the motion that's on the table of developing this letter of reprimand? I mean, I'm sorry, you can come back if people can hear.
So I want to say one more thing, that I understand what you're saying. I don't agree with you, but this is, I understand what you're saying, actually. I don't agree with you either. But that's not what we're talking about here. And I don't believe, and I sat over there about the board, I just want to say that I do not believe a suspension will allow Mr. McGee to buy his companies back. And that's what I see happening. Paying a fee, and now we're going to forgive him if he will be honest and forthright going forward. I don't see that. I have a real problem with that. I don't have an agenda. I just want someone in this position that we can all stand up, get behind as a community, and move forward with. I think that this is attached to him. This plagiarism, he will never live it down, it will go with him. And I wish him well wherever he goes, but I wish he could go somewhere else. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call for a question on motions. All in favor of the motion of this letter of reprimand that we are going to develop? And that, by the way, will be written by myself. And as I was saying, the proper speakers will be, the board will review it, and the proper speakers will be obtained, and it will become a matter for a copy record at a, at the usual meeting. So if anyone who would like to request a copy of that, we'll be able to do so at that time. But we are going to vote on the, on the gist of the letter of reprimand right now. And then we are going to be at the end of this agenda item. So we are voting for the letter of reprimand, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so the motion for the letter of reprimand has passed. And we are going to go on to the next item of business, which is to hire a wrestling coach.
At that time, I love the news, Jamie here. Jamie's here tonight. We got a place to take in our head wrestling coach position. We had two options, to the wrestling position, interview ball. Jamie comes to us, real solid credentials, experienced as a wrestler, coaching in the wrestling, being assisted at a collegiate level as a wrestling coach. So it was out, with a strong recognition, we approved the board to hire Jamie here. They don't want to address that.
Okay, so this is what has moved, and this is Rose and Stephanie, can hire Jamie here as the new wrestling coach. So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Welcome. Thank you for being willing to take a call. We look forward to a great next season. Okay, so on the whole business.
This is on a line of reception, of course, by the council, perhaps, if they have an agenda. We do have a handful of events that we're going to be able to leave this night, so we got to talk.
Okay, so we're going to take a little discussion of the timeline with our attorney, and we'll take that up at a later date. So that leaves us adjourned. I'm going to say one more thing though. I appreciate everybody coming, I appreciate everybody's participation, I appreciate everybody's opinion. But I would like for people to take away from this that we can agree to disagree. And we can, we teach our children, and we're trying to teach our children every day at school, that it's not okay to bully. And we are seeing members in our community who have the right to their opinions, but they do not have the right to bully or try to bully other people or intimidate other people to their opinions. If they can't agree to disagree, then I don't know how they can get along in life. That's just my personal opinion. But we need to have some healing, we need to have some stability. And I would appreciate if everyone who will take that message home to their family and their neighbors and other members of the community. We can't, we can't, we won't solve everybody's question, we won't get to everybody's idea of what the right thing is. But we need to have some healing as a community, and the bullying by the adults of other adults needs to stop.
What's the table, and I'd like to set my, set dates, so we know when to come back for us, or...
It will come up, it will come up again. It'll be on another board agenda. And we can't try to set a date without knowing what her calendar is. So it will be an agenda item, but whether it becomes a special meeting or whether it's on the April meeting, we'll have to find out from her when she can come to us.
I'd just kind of like to say one more thing too. I know not all the board meetings are this interesting. But I wish there was, I wish we got to the point where we hadn't had the board meeting in this old time hall. Because I really think it's very beneficial to have a lot of the audience in public involved in the meetings. And as was already stated, stay for the whole meeting, and here are the positive news that are in all the reports.
It's a lot easier. Being on the board is a fantastic job. But if you're just a staff, you know that you're doing stuff, you just, yeah. I would urge you to consider leaving on board. Because it really means needing, and I think it's a lot of the problem. But if you want, you want all the kids, if you want all the school, and you want your partner, then that's a good one.
So Ryan, can you come up and talk with the microphone?
That is a great moment for comment, that the bullying needs to stop. So does the play.
Thank you. We are adjourned.